Tonight, Deputy Superintendent Dr. Melissa Balknight will provide an overview of the 2024-25 Comprehensive Data Review so that you know what to expect and where to find all of your data resources. Chief Operating Officer Tim Ivey will provide an update on the 2023 bond projects. Dr. Balknight will then introduce presenters from Charlotte Works and Magnet Schools of America to provide data related to the student assignment goals A through E and policy S-ASGP. All of these resources have been made available to you and to the public on the Charlotte Mecklenburg School's website. Dr. Balknight will walk you through exactly where those are located. I now turn it over to Dr. Melissa Balknight, Deputy Superintendent, to begin our report this evening.
Good evening. As we reviewed in our meeting on November the first, the goals of Board Policy S-AGSP serve as the foundation for this 24-25 Comprehensive Data Review. These student assignment goals are: A, provide choice and promote equitable access to varied and viable programmatic options for all children; B, maximize efficiency in the use of school facilities, transportation, other capital and operational resources to reduce overcrowding; C, reduce the number of schools with high concentrations of poor and high-needs children; D, provide school assignment options to students assigned to schools that are not meeting performance standards established by the state; and E, preserve and expand schools and programs in which students are successfully achieving the mission and vision of the Board. To be clear, every decision we make will be in alignment with these five goals in Board A good amount of work is taking place up to this point. I will share information that supports the work that has taken place so far. We'll review the update to the phases of the Comprehensive Data Review and provide new information about Phase Two, which is our current phase of work. In tonight's presentation, we will walk you through the numerous data sources and the ways in which they will be displayed. Data points aligned to Board Policy Goals A through E is on the Charlotte Mecklenburg School's website. For some of these data sources, we have partnered with other organizations to support our work. Those reports are located on the Charlotte Mecklenburg School's website as well. We have invited representatives from those organizations to present their reports to us tonight and during our upcoming Board of Education meeting on November the 22nd. Including these reports ensures that our 24-25 Comprehensive Data Review is inclusive of all relevant data points, such as the evaluation completed by Magnet Schools of America to inform your decision-making now and in the future. Chief Operations Officer Tim Ivey will then provide an update on our 23 bond projects. The information presented is a forecast, our very best estimate, of a timeline for completion. Just like a weather forecast, sometimes even our very best predictions end up a little different because we have worked collaboratively with many entities in order to enact the exciting work. If, for example, there's a change to the timing of available funding, we have to alter our forecasted timeline as well. Next, Anna London, President and CEO from Charlotte Works, will share a program summary. Finally, Magnet Schools of America will share their program summary. Both of these reports align to Student Assignment Goal E, which states, "Preserve and expand schools and programs in which students are successfully achieving the mission and vision of the Board." At this time, let me orient you to the notebook. I'm sure that you all have enjoyed seeing that large notebook that is at your place tonight. I will just lift up that we also have it digitally on the website for you to have access to as well, but there are some pertinent things that you may want to look at, touch, make notes on. So each Board member received a notebook inclusive of printed artifacts to support our ongoing Comprehensive Data Review. The notebook is organized by the following eight sections and subsections. So there's a table of contents. Section one has our policy S-ASGP and supporting data. Section two has a glossary of terms. Section three includes tonight's presentation. Section four, facts and figures, and our one-pagers. And so the one-pagers are highlights from each of our bond projects and moving forward. They are alphabetically in the notebook as well as projects by year. Section five has the capacity and utilization information for all schools. Section six has the PowerPoint presentation from Charlotte Works. Section seven has the presentation from Magnet Schools of America. And finally, section eight, the forecast report that we will learn more about on November the 22nd from Cropper GIS. There are four components of Phase Two. Again, the phase we're currently in. On November the first, there was a review of Board of Education Policy S-AGSP, including how current Board of Education Policy is currently being enacted. There was also an opportunity to get an overview of data sets aligned to Student Assignment Goals A through E as a part of this 24-25 Comprehensive Data Review. Tonight, we'll provide to you the following: a high-level overview of the 2023 bond projects, a program summary from Charlotte Works, a summary of choice programs. This will be provided by Magnet Schools of America. On November the 22nd, we will report on the results of a demographic study and capacity utilization assessment. This will be provided by Cropper GIS. Finally, on December the 10th, we will provide a summary of all data reviewed in the 24-25 Comprehensive Data Review. On December the 10th, we look to you, our Board of Education, to take the data and information presented through the current Phase Two of the Comprehensive Data Review to provide the superintendent with your priorities for district improvements within Charlotte Mecklenburg
Good evening. I'm Tim Ivey, Chief Operations Officer, and it is important to note that some tasks critical to the success of the 24-25 Comprehensive Data Review have already taken place. In 2022, a capital needs assessment took place. A capital needs assessment is a review of all facilities in the Charlotte Mecklenburg School District. The capital needs assessment resulted in a list of capital improvement projects with the highest needs for the next 10 years. This list informed the 24- through 28 Capital Improvement Plan. The results of the capital needs assessment were presented to the Board of Education on May 24, 2022. The capital needs assessment is located on the 2023 bond website. In 2023, the 24- through 28 Capital Improvement Plan, known as the CIP, was created. The Capital Improvement Plan is a list of prioritized school facility projects that can be started within a five-year timeframe. The Capital Improvement Plan was developed based on the capital needs assessment. The 24- through 28 Capital Improvement Plan was approved by the Board of Education on February 28, 2023. It is located on the 23 bond website. On March 4, 2023, the Mecklenburg County Board of County Commissioners approved CMS's request to place $2.5 billion in general obligation bonds for school construction on the November 2023 ballot. On November 7, 2023, the voters of Mecklenburg County voted yes to approve the CMS 2023 bond package of $2.5 billion, providing funding for the construction of school facilities over the next seven years in accordance with the county's funding plan. As we will explore more deeply later in the presentation, this previous work is critical to our current work for the 24-25 Comprehensive Data Review. The 2023 bond and the Comprehensive Data Review are interconnected and interdependent.
Let's shift our focus tonight to the 24-25 Comprehensive Data Review. You will see in the next few slides a reflection of Phase One. In Phase One, there were timely decisions that needed to be made. As we continue to work through the Comprehensive Data Review process, you will see a shift in our approach. Within Phase One, our engagement process started with a communication campaign highlighting engagement sessions and inviting community members to attend. During this campaign, we used web banners, robo calls, superintendent video message, social media, information shared at specific open houses, parent square push notifications to schools that are impacted. We engaged the community in multiple sessions using a variety of modalities. We hosted 23 in-person listening sessions with 226 participants. We made sure to host in-person sessions at each and every school impacted in Phase One of the Comprehensive Data Review. To support this work, we partnered with Research Triangle Institute International, known as RTI, to provide a third-party perspective for community feedback and analysis to inform our work. As seen in the image here, we have completed Phase One by gathering feedback from the community and receiving direction from the Board of Education to create a K-12 arts continuum with University Park Creative Arts Elementary School, First Ward Middle School, and Northwest School of the Arts, and the combining of the Dorothy J. Vaughn STEM Program with Parkside Elementary. Attendance boundaries have also been updated to support the changes that came through Phase One. Finally, Davidson Gate will become a K-5 school while grades six through eight will shift to Bailey Middle School. All of these changes will occur during the 25-26 school year. A team of district staff has been assigned to each of these projects in order to make sure all things happen in a timely manner with a smooth transition. As seen as the image depicted here, there were originally three phases to the 24-25 comprehensive review. Phase One of the Comprehensive Data Review occurred earlier this year due to the timely decisions needed. Throughout Phase One, we listened to stakeholder feedback and worked to continue to align our policy to S-ASGP. As such, you will notice a shift in our Comprehensive Data Review process. You will no longer see three phases. We now have two phases that best aligns to policy S-ASGP. We look to you, our Board of Education, to take the data and information presented through the current Phase Two of the Comprehensive Data Review to provide the superintendent with your priorities for district improvements within Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools. Our updated two-phase process for the Comprehensive Data Review is reflected here. To support the Board of Education in setting these priorities, we now begin Phase Two of the Comprehensive Data Review. It includes a review of the 2023 bond projects, a 10-year forecasting review, and the evaluation of successful and equitable choice programs. In order to accomplish these things, we will provide all data relevant to Goals A through E in Board Policy. We will now share specific information about Phase Two. As mentioned previously in this presentation, community engagement in this process is crucial for the success of the Comprehensive Data Review. Our district teams have worked collaboratively to build an online platform to house all data related to the Comprehensive Review directly aligned to the goals of Policy S-ASGP. Our intention is to be transparent, clear, and organized in our approach for sharing data which will inform the Board of Education within this process. Here you can see a snapshot of the homepage of our Comprehensive Review website, which is live as we speak. There are specific pages to support both Phase One and Phase Two. Information from Phase One has been moved over to this website as well as links to the 2023 bond project website. There are commonly-used terms, frequently-asked questions, and any presentations presented thus far. This is a one-stop shop for all things related to the Comprehensive Data Review for the 24-25 year. The recordings of tonight's meeting, the November the 22nd meeting, and the December 10th Board of Education meetings will also be added to this site. The website is available to the public as of today. As can be seen in this view of the webpage, the data included is specifically aligned to Policy S-ASGP. Community members can toggle to the five goals of the student assignment policy to view data associated with each goal. In thinking of this structure, we are mirroring our approach to the Comprehensive Data Review, which is grounded in the Board Policy it comes through. We are excited to launch this resource and hope it will be helpful tool for Board of Education leaders, school leaders, and all Charlotte Mecklenburg School's community Within each button of the site, website viewers will be able to see the policy goals and the list of data that supports our work around each goal. These are different slides or links on the website that users will be able to go and Previously, we heard from Mr. Ivey on the prior work that supported the Comprehensive Data Review. Now, Mr. Ivey will provide deeper insight into the 2023 bond projects and the interdependence with the Comprehensive Data Review.
Thank you, Dr. Balknight. Before exploring the projects that make up the 23 bond, I would like to review the five types of projects that are covered by the bond. First is a replacement project, which is where an existing school facility or portions of a campus are replaced by new construction. Next is an onsite replacement where a current school facility will be replaced on the same school site. Schools will continue to operate in the existing facility until the new school is complete. Renovations are also part of the 23 bond. These are projects where areas of a school facility will be updated to enhance the educational environment and/or support programmatic changes. A new relief school project consists of a newly constructed school facility explicitly for relief of existing overcapacity situations. And finally, we have design projects, which is the first phase of the process to develop a school. Design must be completed and permit secured prior to starting construction. Now let's dive into the schools impacted by the 23 bond. Shown here is a list of all schools impacted by the 23 bond referendum. As a reminder, we have 30 bond projects that affect 35 schools in the district. Please note that there is one project that was approved by voters in the 23 bond referendum that isn't a school. That is the West Regional Athletic Facility. It is also important to understand that as each project is completed, we'll be able to better utilize our facilities, become more operationally efficient, alleviate overcrowding, allow for more equitable distribution of programs, and enhance opportunities for innovative teaching and learning. The Comprehensive Data Review is pivotal to the upcoming decisions that accompany the 30 bond projects. Before looking at an estimated timeline of the 23 bond projects, I would like to review the items that have to be considered before selecting a project order. These include available cash flow with capital funding, school capacity, condition of current school facilities, logistics surrounding construction, and being good stewards of the bond. Also, please note that there is an annual capital ordinance that is adopted each year by the Mecklenburg County Government to support our projects and other entities with ongoing and new projects. For the ongoing projects, they will either be completed or continued construction into the next year. For new projects or an onsite replacement such as North Mecklenburg, we will host project kickoffs and begin with the design and permitting phase. Once a project is ready to start, we will initiate community outreach and engagement. Now, as we move on to the estimated timeline for the 23 bond projects, I would like to emphasize that the estimated project order is based on these considerations and other Now let's look at the 23 bond projects with estimated completion dates. As you can see, the chart outlines the number of projects anticipated to be completed each school year. As mentioned in the previous slide, this is the timeline based on anticipated cash flow, capacity, condition, logistics, and stewardship. For the 25-26 school year, we have one project, Sedgfield Montessori Elementary School, that is scheduled to be completed. And for the 26-27 school year, there are five projects that will be completed. Please note that the timeline indicates the estimated final completion date for the project and not the date the facility may go into use. For example, some of our bond projects are renovations and onsite replacements to our current facilities. These capital improvements may occur onsite simultaneously while the building is in use. I also want to point out that asterisk on the school years 29, 30, and beyond. This indicates that their completion dates are contingent on the capital funding timeline associated with the bond. The project dates may be adjusted slightly as funds are made available from the sale of the general obligation bonds. Before moving on, it's important to point out that the forecasting information in the chart aligns to Goal B of the Board of Education Policy S-ASGP, which is to maximize efficiency in the use of school facilities, transportation, and other capital and operational resources to reduce overcrowding. This chart, along with other comprehensive review data, is meant to help inform program and boundary decisions associated with the bond projects.
As Mr. Ivey just highlighted on the previous slide, the 2023 bond projects will occur over the next seven years. Let me narrow your focus to the implementation of our Phase One projects. If you notice, the content depicted here goes into effect next school year in 2025, 2026. The work, however, for implementing these projects begins in the current school year, 2024, 2025. As outlined in my summary of Phase One work, the Board of Education voted to create a K-12 arts continuum with University One. Finally, Davidson Gate will become a K-5 school while grades six through eight will shift to Bailey Middle School. All of these changes will go into effect during the 25-26 Board of Education vote. As noted, each project has a cross-functional district leadership team to support it. We are building a communication plan for staff, community members, students, and families for each project. We are partnering with human resources, transportation, and facilities to support the approved changes, again developing the cross-functional team, which is inclusive of-
...leading to an overall enhancement of learning environments. This project is anticipated to open in August of 2028 and would be built in CMBE District One. At the top of each data sheet, the name of the school or project is listed along with the address and anticipated opening date. Each sheet also provides a project description and rationale, CMB district, and build year. The project description and rationale come directly from the bond referendum data sheets, and as mentioned earlier, these sheets will be posted on both the Comprehensive Data Review website and the bond construction website. On the lower half of the new facts and figures data sheet, neighboring schools to New Middle School Number Two are listed along with program information, feeder pattern, and facilities utilization data. Please note that the facilities utilization data can also be found on the new Comprehensive Data Review website and is aligned to Goal B of the Board of Education Policy S-ASGP, which is to maximize efficiency in the use of school facilities, transportation, and other capital and operational resources to reduce overcrowding. For new schools like New Middle School Number Two, the estimated month and year in which the principal will be named is provided, along with the decisions needed for the project and when the lottery will be held if applicable to the program offerings. As shown here is the CMS bond construction website, which provides all pertinent information about the remaining 2017 bond projects and the 2023 bond. This site can be easily found at cmsbondconstruction.com, and please note that the link to the Comprehensive Data Review website has been added to the top menu bar. Linking the Comprehensive Data Review and the bond project shows how these initiatives are interconnected and interdependent on each other. Careful consideration of the completion timeline for the bond projects, the boundary and program decisions that accompany these timelines, along with additional data provided by the Comprehensive Data Review, are pivotal to moving forward successfully. Thank you for the opportunity to review the 2023 bond projects and update you on the new facts and figures data sheets.
All right. Thank you so much for that comprehensive report, Board members. Because we are talking about three different topics under this one section of Comprehensive Review Phase Two, we'll take the questions as the reports are presented. So the first round of questions, I see Board Member Eslyn has her hand up first, but I want to, before you stop there, I want to turn to Board membership. My apologies, I didn't see that she had a forward-looking question. So I'm gonna give her the opportunity, if she has a question first, to go for it because I missed her the last time. Do you have a question, Board membership?
I would say, here are we looking at just the bond projects that's coming up because I had a question about EE Waddell I didn't see, and I'm wondering if we're just looking at right now projects for the bond, for our 2023 bond.
So, did you want to respond to that, Mr. Ivey?
Yes. EE Waddell is listed under 23, 2032, sorry, and 2033. So it is on the estimated timeline.
Okay. And what is gonna, what are we looking at there? I'm sorry, I must have missed that.
I know that there is going to be the potential of a building addition, but I'm gonna let Mr. Licaria speak specifically about that project.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening. So the plan was to bring that campus to baseline. So those of you who are familiar know that Waddell is essentially the same building as Butler and Hopewell. Those projects have received the 25-classroom addition to bring them to 100 classrooms, and we were looking at building a program-specific building based on what decisions were made about what programming might go in EE Waddell.
Right. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Thank you for that.
Board member Eslyn.
Yeah. So I have a question about the facts and figures, and you just happened to use my middle school, so, you know, I'm gonna use this one as an example. But I see that you have principal name, date, you have the lottery date, you have all of that stuff, but it says feeder pattern TBD. When are we, when can the public start to expect those conversations to start happening? Because I'm getting a lot of questions about that.
For this particular school, Middle School Number Two, those decisions should be made, where we would like for them to be made, 12 months, 10 to 12 months out.
So can I just interject for one second? I know you may have a follow-up, but is that for all of the projects that-
That was my follow-up.
That would be, we have to make student assignment, feeder pattern, boundaries. Is it on average 10 to 12 months for each project?
I think for communication and engagement, that would be a recommended timeline, that we have those decisions 10 to 12 months.
Sorry, Board member- So are we, you're saying to start that process 10 to 12 months before it opens? Or have that finish 10 to 12 months before it opens?
I would say that it would be best to have that finish 10 to 12 months before they open.
Okay. Okay. That's soon coming up for that, if that's the case. So I'm just, I'm interested to see how that timeline works. Thank you. That was it. I need to get my follow-up.
I'm sorry. Vice Chair Rankin?
If we could go to, I'm on Slide 24, which says, "Schools impacted by 2023 bond." In the footnotes down there, it says, "West Regional Athletic Facility." Just to be clear, it's listed as if it's a project that was approved to be built. That's not what we voted on. I'm confirmed that's correct, because we voted on, re-approved only design work. Is that correct?
No.
Okay.
That's correct. The funding was only for the design.
Design only. And looking at this, at this slide, these are the schools that are impacted by 2023 bond. These are not the actual bond projects themselves, because there's some on here that I don't think are considered bond projects, they're just impacted. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct, because some schools are impacted if they're opening a new school, and then they are rezoned or are boundary schools, they may have some form of impact or program change.
That was my two.
Okay.
I'll come back.
Board member nine.
Thanks for the presentation. How were we determining order of these, considering, I know we still have to get through the next presentation where we're looking at capacity? So what was the prioritization? And I say that as South Charlotte is in desperate need of middle schools. Sue.
As far as the list of order, as far as the ranking of the projects, I'll turn that to Mr. Licaria for specifics.
So again, when we adopt a capital needs assessment, that is a prioritized list of larger projects. Then when we go to determining the plan to advance for funding the capital improvement plan, it's a subset of those projects. So it's the highest priority projects that are advanced then for funding. Then when it comes time to figure out how to execute those projects, there are a variety of factors. If you look here, you see that Northwest School of the Arts and South MECK are front-loaded, and that's because we had 2017 bond projects that we needed to complete, and then we wanted to keep working. We didn't want to demobilize. We were trying to be efficient and effective stewards of our resources. Then as we start looking at what projects we can bring online, we're starting to fit that puzzle piece together with our capital funding, with the timeline for design, and permitting, and construction, recognizing some projects have a very long horizon. So we pulled New Second Ward forward because we knew that this was something we've never done before, so we were gonna be in design for a long period of time. But when the county authorizes the project, they authorize the full amount. So then that full amount has to be amortized and cash flowed with all of the other projects that we want to start, as well as the things we want to complete and CP and the Charlotte Mecklenburg- Mecklenburg Library, and Park and Rec, and all the other things the county is funding. And so all of those factors determine then when we can start projects, when we can deliver them, recognizing that August twenty-fifth only comes once a year.
So a follow-up to that is, at what point are these projects locked within, within these, like, parameters? Because your initial was caution, these can shift, but what I'm hearing from you is there's a set schedule. So is that the two years, the next two years are set, and we still have time to look at the comprehensive review data and potentially shuffle ones we think are higher priority than other? Or are we saying this is kind of set based on how the county's funding?
So the only thing that's set is what we've determined through twenty-twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-nine. So those projects are set, right? We've announced that last tranche that included Huntersville, Berry Hill, right? Those schools, those are the ones that are set. We have advanced a list for consideration for funding to Mecklenburg County that's probably larger than what they'll fund, but we, we're at, we're trying to make sure we can ask for as many starts as we possibly can, recognizing that, again, there's different timelines for some of these projects that are necessarily, Gueranger is necessarily going to take longer, even though it's a, a smaller project per se, because of the logistics and the delicacy of working on that campus and the fact that it's on the National Historic Register. So all of those things have to be taken into consideration. So we have, we have a plan, but until the county adopts their annual funding ordinance, we don't have certainty. So the only thing that we can say definitively is happening is what's through the twenty-twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-nine opening.
Board Member Klein?
Just for clarification, because I think it's confusing, South Charlotte, E E Waddell, the West Regional Athletic Complex, these are design-only. Would you, for the public, define design-only? Because some people may say, oh, we're getting a new school in seven years, because that's been the rumor, I know, in the community, in the South Charlotte community, is, oh, we're getting a brand-new school, and it's going here, here, and here. It's design-only. Could you define that for the public?
Absolutely. So again, in the interest of trying to have projects shelf-ready for when, shovel-ready, if you will, for when the twenty-twenty-nine funding becomes available. So when we went into the twenty-four, twenty-eight C I P, the county told us at that point the expectation would be a new C I P with new money in twenty-twenty-nine. So in order to maximize the number of projects under the funding that the county was willing to advance us, which was the two-and-a-half billion dollars, we put some projects in that were design-only, recognizing that we would have those designs ready when new money became available in twenty-twenty-nine, so that we could continue to work on those projects. But the only thing that was funded in this bond was the design phase of the work. So if the new money lines up with our planned design, we will continue into permitting, into construction on the timeline that you see there with those delivery dates, but again, that's twenty-twenty-nine, and, and that's dependent on those new dollars.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Witherspoon?
Uh, thank you. Uh, my question was around anticipated, uh, cash flow. Now, my understanding is that when the money, when the monies are available, it's dispersed rather easily, quickly. But when we talk about anticipated cash flow, is that like the rate of issue of, I don't know the correct language, for the, of the bonds?
So that's, that's a very good question. So when the bond passes, we don't get all of the money upfront, right? So it, it, the money then gets allocated to us in an annual process by Mecklenburg County at a funding rate that they determine based on a variety of factors, all the other things that they're trying to fund, what the interest rates are, what the market looks like, all of those sorts of things. So then we work with them on what they forecast as the available amount of funding, and we're trying to fit the projects together so we can eat up a hundred percent of that capacity. We want to make sure that we're using everything that they're telling us is available funding in any given year. Once they've authorized the project, we have definition, and we know that we can continue to go, but they literally reimburse us month by month, project by project. We are doing constant accounting with our partners in Mecklenburg County, and they are funding us as the projects go. So even when the annual authorization comes, they don't write us a check for that full amount. It's just they're agreeing to go ahead and take out the credit card at that point.
Follow-up?
All right, follow-up, yeah, and just to, uh, follow-up again, there is enough money as a buffer for any type of, uh, uh, what do you call it?
Contingencies.
I expect the cost when things go up.
Overdue, inflation.
Inflation, all of that, right.
We do have contingency and escalation built into all of these projects. Mecklenburg County actually did the escalation, so they're forecasting what they expected inflation to be over the, the life of this bond program.
All right. Board Members, any other questions related to our bond project? All right. Thank you so much.
At this time, I would like to introduce President and CEO of Charlotte Works, Anna London. Charlotte Works believes individuals and communities prosper when residents have access to gainful employment and businesses have access to a skilled workforce. The people who live or work in our region have the opportunity to thrive. Their work is in accordance with the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act. This legislation was signed into law in two thousand and fourteen to help Americans of all ages and skill sets find high-quality jobs and develop long-term careers. It also assists employers in hiring and retaining skilled workers. By closing the gap between what local employers need and the skills workers have, Charlotte Works aims to provide direction and leadership to Mecklenburg County leaders. By partnering with Charlotte Works, we believe this direction and leadership can begin with career planning with the students of Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools as they plan for their future. I will turn it over at this time to Mr. Rocky McGregor, who will introduce Anna London, President and CEO of Charlotte Works.
Greetings. My name is Rocky McGregor. I have the honor of serving as the Board Chair for Charlotte Works, as well as the Chief Executive and Resident for Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools. I will provide a brief overview of Charlotte Works and how we currently work together with C M S, how the fabric of education and workforce development is strategically and intentionally woven together. I will turn it over to Anna to share the future of work and how we can continue working together to prepare our students. Charlotte Works is the Workforce Development Board of Charlotte and Mecklenburg County, the largest single-county workforce development board in the state. This illustration shows that starting on your left-hand side, there are over five hundred workforce development boards nationally, and the federal level of our funding flows from the Department of Labor, from the Honorable Jennifer Sue, who has visited Charlotte, North Carolina, multiple times this year. There are twenty workforce boards that make up the state of North Carolina. They are led by our Department of Commerce under the Honorable Governor Cooper. Charlotte Works is the largest single-county workforce development board in the, in North Carolina, serving the largest number of job seekers and businesses a year. In the first three months of our fiscal year, from July to September, there were over twenty-three thousand job seekers that were, that provided, were provided access to N C Work Services. Locally, Charlotte Works has a Board of Directors that is made up of fifty-one percent industry, and the mayor and the county commissioner chair appoint the Board of Directors. Charlotte Works serves as a connector to align workforce ecosystems. It is also the influencer to ensure all workforce initiatives are data-informed, and a change agent to ensure our workforce ecosystem is accessible, inclusive, and ultimately promotes equity for all. This visual is to show the intentional overlap of Charlotte Works and Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools. As the Board Chair of Charlotte Works and Executive, uh, Leadership, uh, excuse me, the Chief Executive in Residence, I work along with Dr. Balknight, who also serves on the Board of Directors. Kevin Lox and Anna London support the C T E Advisory Board. Shamia Williams, who's in the audience as well, is truly the backbone of who carried the city's commencement to education to employment from vision to action. She is also the visionary behind I Am Steam, which, which had almost three hundred C M S students participating in this event, October the twenty-ninth of this year, which engaged over forty employers. Within the first year of Anna London's tenure as the CEO of Charlotte Works, and as the co-chair of the Charlotte Executive Leadership Council's Working Team, and as a member of the Workforce Development Council of the U S Conference of Mayors, which is made up of the largest and highest-performing workforce boards across the U S, and we might also want to mention that she's a member of the National Association of Counties and a part of the executive leadership of North Carolina's Association of Workforce Development Boards. I want to make sure that we hit two key areas, and there'll certainly be others, but we want to make sure that we share with our board here, what are the jobs of greatest need over the next five years that have the highest earning potentials? And we also want to talk about C M S, uh, what are the areas C M S focuses on to prepare students for these in-demand jobs over the next five years? So with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Anna to speak about the future of work.
Thank you so much, Rocky, um, and thank you to, um, the school board, as well as Dr. Hill and Dr. Balknight for having us here tonight. So you all may have, you may have heard this before, I'm sure that you have, but in nineteen ninety-seven, we heard from teachers, you won't always have access to an encyclopedia. Now we have the internet, we have Google, Wikipedia, et cetera. In two thousand and six, we heard you won't always have a calculator in your pocket, and now we do. We have smartphones, iPhone, and Android. Today, um, the question is, should students have access to A I and the use of technology? And so we know that A I will be a part of the future of work. All right. So I just want to share with you all a few data points, um, around A I. And so just as digital skills of the past thirty years shape our work today, these digital skills will continue to shape the future of work for C M S students. According to McKinsey Global Institute and World Economic Forum, the future of jobs, the skills required for many global jobs are evolving and have already changed by twenty-five percent since two thousand and fifteen. And with A I accelerating these shifts, as well as technology, they can expect their jobs to change even more quickly, reaching at least sixty-five percent by two thousand and thirty. So that means in the next four years, uh, or the next six years, jobs can change by at least sixty-five percent because of technology and A I. We know that forty-four percent of the workforce will need to be upskilled or reskilled over the next five years. This continues to reiterate job-specific skill, how important job-specific skills are, but also to ensure that the adaptability and the ability to maneuver and learn through uncertainty as technology continues to change the, the evolving workforce. The highest priority for skills training from two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-seven is actually analytical thinking, which is set to account for ten percent of training initiatives on average. The second priority for workforce development is to provoke critical thinking, which will be the subject of eight percent of upskilling initiatives over the next few years. According to a study that LinkedIn did, um, a recent study that LinkedIn did, forty-seven percent believe that A I will boost productivity, forty-four percent plan to augment A I use in the next year, and this was to executives in the, um, in industry, forty percent view A I as a key to unlocking growth and revenue. In, let's see, okay, in nineteen forty, oh, oops, it went really fast, okay. In nineteen forty, there were fifty million jobs in the U S. In two thousand and twenty-two, there were a hundred and fifty-seven million jobs in the U S, but ninety-four million of those jobs were brand-new occupations that were created because of technology. So that shows that sixty-three million of the, so it grew by thirteen million jobs that were current occupations, but ninety-four million new jobs because of technology. So preparing students for industry-specific roles is important, but not necessarily, um, we should not necessarily be preparing students for a prescriptive path, because we know that jobs will continue to evolve with the evolution of technology. So now we'll talk about preparing students. Let me get water. Oh, jeez. Goodness gracious. All right. So as Rocky mentioned, um, I am a member of the, um, or I'm the co-chair of the Workforce Working Team of the Charlotte Executive Leadership Council. We also have a committee of, an official committee of the Charlotte Works Board of Directors called the Workforce Providers Council. And so what you're looking at here is the current strategic vision, um, that we're working toward in Mecklenburg County. And so this slide is a comprehensive view of our current existing workforce ecosystem. So on the talent side, you have the Workforce Providers Council, which Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools is a member of, Dr. Balknight is a member of the Workforce Providers Council. It's made up of the fifteen larger workforce development organizations in Mecklenburg County. On the business side, you see that we have the Charlotte Executive Leadership Council. We're also partnering with around two to three thousand other businesses each year. So this vision slide really is to show that the, the center of it all is really to make sure that we have a job match. So we want to form a clear picture of today and tomorrow's workforce needs and implement solutions that close job skills gaps. All right. So as we look at the three Es for C M S, so we know that you all have, you want to make sure that in the three Es, that all students are prepared to either, at graduation, enlist, be employed, and/or enroll in, in post-secondary education. And so this is a quick snapshot of jobs that were posted, um, between, that were posted over the last year. So over one year, there were around two thousand five hundred military jobs posted. Those are both federal government jobs, but we do know that students who enlist in the military are typically going to travel outside of Mecklenburg County initially, whenever they enlist. For the employed pathway, there were over twenty-six thousand jobs posted over the last year with an, um, with an average hourly, hour, average hourly wage of twenty-one dollars an hour. For an associate's degree, there were over five thousand jobs, um, posted over the last year with an hourly weight of, rate of twenty-nine dollars an hour. For a bachelor's degree, there were over twenty thousand jobs posted at an average hourly rate of thirty-seven dollars an hour. So something really interesting to look at, that for, um, if we're, if students are going straight from high school graduation to employment, there are over twenty-six thousand jobs available. But for the jobs that required only an associate's degree, there's only five thousand jobs available. So many, many of the individuals that may have an associate's degree, of course, also qualify, um, for jobs that only require a high school diploma, but it is really interesting that actually in Mecklenburg County, which is something that is not traditionally shared, there are a lot of jobs available for students that are, that have a high school, that are graduating with a high school diploma. So currently, if we're looking at the jobs that are, um, that are posted, the most postings, so across the top, um, across the top, there are hundreds of maintenance technician roles posted. So high school, so one category, I'm not gonna read them all, but for one category, high school diploma, the middle is associate's degree, and then the far right is the bachelor's degree. So as you look, these are only jobs that are the highest posted or highest openings in Mecklenburg County over the last year. And so the way that I would explain it is, so maintenance technicians, there's hundreds of those available right now. Licensed practical nurses, hundreds of those available right now. For accountants, hundreds of those available right now. And so we know that in Mecklenburg County, um, the jobs that are in demand over the next five years will continue to focus on fields driven by population growth, growth, tech advancement, and and regional economic development. And so those key areas are what CMS is already, already preparing students for. Information technology roles, such as software development, cybersecurity, data analysis, and cloud computing are in high demand. Healthcare roles, which some are listed up here, so those are registered nurses, medical assistants, healthcare technicians, et cetera. Financial services, advanced manufacturing and clean energy, construction and skilled trades. And so some of those are construction managers, electricians, plumbers, et cetera. And then the sixth industry is transportation and logistics. And so those are, many of these jobs do make up those high-demand industries, which CMS is preparing students for now, whether it's through career pathways or career and technical education pathways. All right. So if we go back to this slide, I want to show you where Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools plays, plays a key role. So in the talent journey, as part of the strategic vision for workforce development. So this is, this shows where there is education and the education and workforce development ecosystems overlap. So at the top, you'll see the workforce or the job seeker journey. And so as we're serving job seekers, job seekers, which would also be students, we, they identify the job need. They access workforce partners, utilize resources. And that is where, at the utilize resources section, where secondary education is really the start of a career pathway or career mapping, Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools is the largest workforce development organization in Mecklenburg County, in our area. And so job seekers or students would utilize the resources, identify the job opportunities, we're engaging the businesses, so we're engaging employers, ultimately, ultimately making that job match. And so whenever we look at the actual continuum or the pathway, secondary education, K through 12, CMS is starting that pathway. Occupational credentials would be the next step. So some, so students are able to earn occupational or industry-recognized credentials while they're in high school. They're also able to participate in many of the workforce providers' training programs, short-term training programs. Our key partner for associate's degree programs is Central Piedmont. And then the bachelor's degree, of course, would be Charlotte, as well as the other post-secondary institutions, higher education. So one thing that I do want to point out is, as we zoom in on secondary education, you all, I am sure, are well-versed on the North Carolina portrait of a graduate. And McKinsey also did a study to identify the 56 deltas that go across, I believe it's 13 different elements. But of those, of those deltas, you will see overlap of the, of the, of the deltas that are required for, or that are listed in the North Carolina portrait of a graduate, as well as the McKinsey study, verbatim. And so adaptability, collaboration, communication, critical thinking, empathy, making sure that students have a learner's mindset, and personal responsibility were the, were the key attributes. And so I'll just briefly share, so research by the McKinsey Global Institute looked at the kind of jobs that will be lost, as well as those that will be created as automation, AI, and robotics take hold. And it inferred the type of high-level skills that will become increasingly important as a result. The need for manual and physical skills, as well as basic cognitive ones, will decline, but demand for technology, social and emotional, and higher cognitive skills grow. And so some work will, of course, continue to be specialized, but in a labor market that is more automated, digital, and dynamic, all citizens will benefit from having a set of foundational skills that help them to fulfill the following three criteria, no matter the sector in which they work or their occupation. So the three criteria are add value beyond what can be done by automated systems and intelligent machines, operate in a digital environment, and continually adapt to new ways of working and new occupations. And so that is why the deltas or the skills that are overlapped between McKinsey and the North Carolina portrait of a graduate are actually the most important skills to learn as students, that are the foundational skills prior to students actually learning the job or industry-specific skills. So if we look at the educational continuum, we see that elementary school, and some of the things that you all were actually discussing prior, are making sure that in elementary school, students are really learning to learn. They're learning the reading skills, they're learning social-emotional skills, so empathy, collaboration, self-awareness, and self-management, problem-solving. For middle school, it's critical thinking, so math skills, mental flexibility, digital fluency, and citizenship. And then for high school, planning and ways of working, time management, interpersonal, so mobilizing systems, entrepreneurship, and that is an entrepreneurship mentality, so that they know how to contribute where they are, not just entrepreneurship as owning or starting their own business. And then also software use and development. So making sure that high school students are, continue to be comfortable with specific certifications, but also how technology is changing things. So some of the things that we partner with Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools on, and that Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools does an incredible job, is in middle, middle school and high school, even going down to elementary, but making sure that work-based learning opportunities are being provided, so whether that's having classroom speakers or workplace tours. And then also making sure that students have access to job shadowing and internships and things like that as well. Other things are like the undecided day that is offered every year, as well as what's your E? So students being able to identify which E pathway they want to go down. So we know that CMS really does lay the foundation for the workforce. Foundational skills and baseline skills are the keys to developing new specialized skills. And so foundational skills, such as creativity, adaptability, the baseline skills are things like problem-solving, planning, and then specialized skills, we just provided two, but those are like project management, SQL, software development, cybersecurity, also things in high-tech manufacturing, and then the healthcare and health sciences that are also being provided. So what skills actually prepare students for the workforce? So whenever we look at income, employment, and then ultimately, we want to make sure that the students and that job seekers are fulfilled. And so making sure that for income, making sure that students are able to do work plans, organizational awareness and self-confidence. Employment, so adaptability, coping with uncertainty, and synthesizing messages. And then for fulfillment, self-motivation, coping with uncertainty shows up again, as well as self-confidence. And then the last thing that I'll leave you with is, I know that I shared a lot of information. So we consistently have data that is updated on our website, that is very specific to all six of those industries that I shared, the industries in demand. So we've got videos, we have very specific job or occupational data that also drills down to what are the transferable skills? What are the actual skills that they're looking for in those industries? What are the credentials, the degrees that are required? And then the last quote that I'll leave you with is that, "Not every job is relevant experience on a resume, but almost every job gives individuals experience in using and developing skills that are core competencies for other positions." And so that's really how we look at preparing the future workforce, for the future of work.
Thank you very much, board members. I see board member Easley as the first question.
So you spent a lot of your presentation talking about how technology is creating all of these jobs and these jobs that didn't exist before, and AI is going to create even more jobs. But yet, on your talent demand side, I don't see a single technology job on here. Can you even somewhat make some sort of connection with why we're seeing, not seeing that in talent demand, but yet we're knowing that technology is going to be a huge portion?
So just because it's not a technology job, technology is woven through every occupation and every industry.
Okay.
Yep. So really, it's not about, look, and that is a great question. So it's not necessarily about looking at a specific technology role, but we know that technology is woven throughout every job, every occupation, and every industry. And so really, what that means is how a, a specific role or a specific job or occupation will continue to evolve and change because of technology.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm going to try to make this one question with possibly a lot of, but I think, I think it'll just be one question. But how are we working to make sure that more students are getting the opportunity to get exposed to different careers, like the undecided day? And how are, and like with that, how are we making sure that every student is having the opportunity to like be part of something like that throughout the year, and it's not necessarily depending on, you know, oh, your school publicized it and things like that? Does that make sense at all?
I probably should answer that as a district question. So one of the things is we partner with agencies like Charlotte Works, but we also, our career and technical education department, we continue to look for new ways to bring businesses on campus for all kids to have access. Then our school counselors do things as well, like college interviews and other practice opportunities. So we continue to look for new ways to partner with our students, to expose them to more of those things throughout the year.
You can come back, I think I'm fine.
I'm not sure who this question is for. I work in the AI field, and AI is a very abstract term. So from your perspective, like from the lens of CMS and how we should leverage it, what do you, what do you think we should be playing our, placing our biggest bets? Because there's so much that we can tackle from an AI standpoint, like what would you say, or your like top, what would you say are your biggest bets for that? Yeah.
So I'll share what we're kind of doing with our youth and young adult programs as well. And so we are teaching job seekers, but we're teaching the youth and young adults how to use AI productively. And so whether it's, you know, help, teaching them of the various apps and asking specific questions, like how to do my resume, how to update my resume, having AI to help generate ideas and details maybe for something they're working on, or maybe a vision that they may have that AI could support them. On that, I know though, that there are, and I am not an expert in the education space. And so I know that there are challenges sometimes with incorporating AI into the daily activities in the education setting because of plagiarism, or because of, you know, you want to make sure that students are also learning critical thinking skills on their own without having AI generate everything. And so that is one of the things that we're doing, is just kind of looking through all of the various apps. I feel like there's a new app every day that is AI. But helping, helping youth and young adults to utilize those to be productive and to help them to do things that may take them a while, but would still allow them to think critically.
The other thing that I would just mention, board member Monterey Duvall, is it should also be bidirectional. We can learn, as we talk about AI, many of these young people that we're talking to, they may know more about how they're currently utilizing it, or how we might be able to utilize it than we may know. So I do think it's an opportunity for us to create a bidirectional relationship, whether that's through some type of co-ops, or just opportunities to actually engage young people in their interest from a technological perspective.
Yeah, I think that's great.
Board member none.
Thanks for the presentation. I think one of the things that some of the board members, including board member Monterey Duvall, and I both have been asking, is we have made this huge investment in technology for our students, but what the biggest thing that concerns me, and I'm also, by the way, not an educator in marketing, highly technical and digital, is when I look at the portrait of a graduate, and then I look at this McKinsey study, there's a glaring miss right now. And it's in that box of digital. And so the question I have is, from your partnership or collaboration, how do we actually start getting ahead in that box? Because historically, you know, state education is more focused on like academic curriculum, as well as, I will say, secondary institutions. I noticed this when I went to college, where we're really behind in marketing. How do we actually start forward-thinking this into, and as I think about goal for enrolled enlisted employees, how do we start making this an asset rather than a liability for our students here in Mecklenburg County?
That is a great question. And so what I would say is, I think, continue to lean into industry. You know, we have, so I participate and support the CTE advisory board, and I think, you know, industry is able to tell us how they're currently using technology and where they see technology going over the next few years with the specific roles or positions, occupations within their business. And so I would say continuing to lean in to those advisory councils, advisory boards, as industry continues to tell you exactly where they see technology changing specific roles, like in healthcare, like in high-tech manufacturing, advanced manufacturing, continuing to lean in, because to your point, it can be challenging, whether it's in secondary or post-secondary, to pivot. But I do think that we need to be, you know, continue to be as flexible and nimble as possible and as appropriate to incorporate in what industry is telling us they need in the curriculum, so that we are producing talent, or supply, or students that really do meet the specific needs of industry. And so having industry come in and participate in reviewing curriculum, especially as it relates to the CTE classes and CTE pathways, making sure that industry really does vet and verify that. That is something that we do, we serve as kind of a connector and convener in that space with industry. And so we are constantly or consistently providing that information. Dr. Balknight is hearing it in our board, our Charlotte Works Board meetings, as well as the Workforce Providers Council meetings, as well as with the Charlotte Executive Leadership Council. So it is a consistent effort for industry to tell us exactly what they need, so that everything that we are sharing is industry-led and industry-driven.
Just look forward to seeing that in goal four.
I have two questions that are not related. The first one is about the talent demand, the talent demand slide that you have. And it talks about the wages for military, high school diploma, et cetera. This is the starting salaries, correct?
It is, yes. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And so what's interesting is, oh, for military? Did it turn off? Okay. For military, there are much fewer jobs because there's not as many here in Mecklenburg County. So that is Mecklenburg County-specific data.
Well, my question is, specifically, do you have any data about how these wage gaps close over years? Like, so for example, you know, eventually, if you're entering a certain practice, a field of law, eventually those gaps close over time, right? So even though you started off in a different type of law, it may catch up with something that's more, because the top end levels out. So do you have, because as we talk about upward economic mobility, well, when you look at this, well, $21 is not moving the path, like moving, moving a student forward in that space. So do you have information about how those gaps close over time?
We do, yes. So industry-specific data around advancement and career pathway?
Yes.
Yes. That is something that I could provide as a follow-up.
So I think that's, that's useful information to know how those gaps close.
Okay.
The other question that I have is about, you indicated that CMS is kind of already doing what the students are preparing students for, essentially one of the three Es or E. And I'm particularly talking about the employed E. But at what rate? No, that's a broad question, right? So do you have data, it's not specifically related to, it's not necessarily directly related to our goal, but do you have any post-graduation, post-matriculation data to say, our students are, or is that data you can obtain, are entering these fields? So that's part one of the question. And part two of the question is, when I say at what rate is, like how much do you intersect with, and this may be for Dr. Balknight, how much do you intersect with, like our magnet programming? Like, it's like, are we hitting the mark? That's, that's what I'm, you know, I get that we're fundamentally, every school system fundamentally teaches reading, arithmetic, those things, social, emotional, but are we hitting the mark in the industry? And why, how do we know where those gaps are? So I don't know how that intertwines with, I know we're getting ready to hear from Magnet School of America, but how are you engaged that way? Or should you be engaged more in that way?
So I'll respond for us and how we're partnering, and then pass it over to Dr. Balknight for CMS. But, so last year was the first year that we really partnered on the three Es. And so this year, we are continuing, so we partnered with the city of Charlotte to, under the city manager, he made a commitment to hiring students who were right out of high school. And so this, we are continuing to maintain relationships. Actually, Rocky and I just went and met with those students a few weeks ago and had an incredible conversation with. had an incredible conversation with them. And so they have all maintained employment, which is a great success. However, so this year we are working alongside other partners to expand that and to really scale the, um, employment pathway. And so that is a part of our, um, we're, we're doing that, we're scaling and expanding it with the Charlotte Works Board, the Charlotte Executive Leadership Council, as well as other businesses in the community. Um, and so we will be, continue to track that information. One thing that I would say on behalf of the workforce development board of Mecklenburg County is that unfortunately, um, we should have access to wage data. Um, so for those that you like to, that do like to advocate, we should have access to wage data at the state level. We do not. And so there is a gap in being able to really track specific individuals, specific students. So whether it's students graduating from Charlotte Mecklenburg schools or those individuals that are actually enrolled, the 23,000 individuals that Rocky mentioned, um, so people that enroll in our services, we're able to receive aggregate information, but that is something that we are working on. Um, we would love to have data sharing, um, arrangements or data sharing agreements so that we're able to, even if it's cohort-based, really track students that are, that are enrolled or job seekers enrolled in specific programs and pathways. But that is something that we are working on with North Carolina Department of Commerce.
Just real quick, Dr. Baughnite, I just wanted to also mention that when we talk about, um, the high, uh, high school students that are going directly into, uh, gainful employment, it's not, these are entry-level positions and it's, it's not just about what they're making from an hourly perspective, but what the trajectory is that they're on. So the, the roles that we're talking about, you know, we're, some of the roles that we're talking about, you know, they actually have, um, they actually have pension, right? They actually have a 401K match. They have, uh, prepaid, uh, tuition. So there, there's a lot more than just, um, the starting pay, but also they're being placed on pathways, um, you know, from a career perspective. So when we talk about gainful employment, we're looking at that from a holistic lens. And as, um, Anna mentioned, we're going back and touching these, uh, young people to make sure that as they leave high school, what is your experience? And, you know, what challenges are you facing? And so that entail, to your point, is what we take back into the school system to better inform, uh, the students that are coming behind them.
Oh, sorry.
Just one question. Uh, I'm always thinking about making sure that they're reaching all students, right? Particularly, especially those that this will be life-changing for their families as well. Are there any partner, I don't know the legality around this, but are there any of your partners that, uh, hire students while they're in high school? Um, I, I think of students kind of, uh, like a paid student, some of them who work after school or work, come straight from work to school, uh, that we capturing these, those students as well and providing pathways for them.
Yes. So we are working with employers who of course will hire students while they're still in high school. Um, but, but one of the things that we also partner with CMS on is making sure that students also have access to, um, starting their, kind of their career pathway or journey in their 10th and 11th grade year. So we have many students who may do a summer internship or, or an internship during their junior year, um, and then their senior year do another internship and ultimately be hired by that business. Um, and so some of the, some of the, um, employers that are participating in the education to employment, they do provide either internship, paid internship opportunities or opportunities for students to be hired while they're still in high school. Um, and for those that have a, a, um, rule or a policy where students can't be hired until 18, many of them will provide work-based learning opportunities until that student turns 18.
Okay, I just have one last question for Dr. Baughnite. And, cause I don't think I kind of got the, is there a connection between magnet programming and like a, a Charlotte Works?
Thank you Chair Sealy for asking. And the, the purpose for us inviting Charlotte Works is just that. It's important for, as decisions are being made by our Board of Education, that we understand as a collective, the job forecast for this Mecklenburg County, our economic ability for our students and also for the community. So it was important for Charlotte Works to come tonight to really talk about the workforce and possible employment for those that will go directly into the workforce and then those that will go off for post-secondary education. I think the common theme that you heard tonight, while we have a variety of jobs at each level, there's lots of other skills that are needed. So as you're thinking about our magnet programming, and when you hear from Magnet Schools of America, this will help shape your thinking about where do we really need to lean into our programming and where do we need to think about, is this still appropriate programming for our students that go into the workforce today?
So essentially you're saying as a board member in your work with Charlotte Works, that is informing the staff of the considerations you're making on how we shape our magnet programs?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Can I clarify there? At what level though? Is it mainly at the high school level that that's helping shape? Cause.
Well, well ideally, as I think Anna lifted, that it really starts at the elementary level. So if you begin to think about if you want to have K-12 continuums like we decided to do with the arts programming as the board directed, the same thing could happen if we know that this is a pathway STEM, for example, that could start potentially in elementary school and go to high school, you could decide to have K-12 continuums in other areas based on the job market and forecasting and children could build skills along the way, like the Dorothy J. Vaughn coding that could build into a cybersecurity certification at high school, for example.
Yeah, I guess my follow-up will be while I think it's great, it's helping with programs, I think it's also a lot of pressure to think that a 16-year-old is going to know what they want to be when they grow up. So I guess how is it informing not only the programs but curriculum?
It's informing the programming, the programming, our curriculum will support the programming because we will add additional enhancements to our core standard curriculum to support the different programming. So they would go together as planned with some preparation and professional development for that school. But a child could be exposed to all of those things because what we know with our career and technical education, the more exposure and opportunities I get to experience things, it does better inform my interest. So as we continue to do interest inventories and work with students K-12, then they can form, hey, I'm really interested in this line of work because I've had these different experiences. That answering your question, Ms. None?
No, but I may not have asked it the proper way. So I go back to this, the portrait of the graduate versus McKinsey study, right? And there's certain skills that no matter what job you decide to get, whether that's after high school or post-secondary that you need. And I see there's a disconnect between what North Carolina is saying and what job seekers are requiring based on the McKinsey studies. So for instance, digital literacy, influency and all these things. So are we taking this information from Charlotte Works and informing like our core, I don't know if it's curriculum or what we anticipate all high school students should do?
Thank you.
Sorry.
That's a great question.
Okay.
And so there are a couple of things. As Anna London shared, she also is a part of our CTE board. And so that's another partnership board that has their pulse on the business community. And so they come and give us feedback on the things that students will need as they go into the workforce. So that also informs our, uh, Mr. Buchanan and our executive director of CTE to determine pathways and programming that children may be interested in that are relevant to the job market. So it does change what we offer to students to make sure that we're providing relevant programming, potentially in the elective space that children can choose what they're interested in. But then there's some core experiences that we provide, for example, financial literacy that we've implemented and it's in the regular expectation for high school students to have. If that answers your question.
All right. I think we have it, no, not yet.
Sorry.
Just, just one quick thing. Um, in addition to Anna being on the advisory council, we're also engaged with, as, um, Dr. Baughnite mentioned, um, Brett Buchanan. So there's overlap between Charlotte Works Board with our data and the data that, um, Brett Buchanan is also, uh, pulling together for CMS. So all of that, as we know, is, you know, we're just getting really going on that, but I think that's also going to provide some insight for us.
Thank you. I think the last question's going to go? No, no. Okay. Um, all right, thank you so much. And I think that we have our final phase of the, our comprehensive data. I called it a data dump earlier. Nobody corrected me.
I would like to thank, um,
I should have called it a data dump.
Anna London and Rocky McGregor for sharing great information from Charlotte Works. The information, um, they provided will be instrumental in determining the next steps in the comprehensive review. I would like to now introduce, as they go over to the other podium, Beth Cochran and Heidi Tarji, educational consultants for Magnet Schools of America. Both representatives from Magnet Schools of America have worked and partnered with large school districts across the country, inclusive of Wake County Schools, Broward County Schools and Magnet Schools of America. As previously mentioned, Magnet Schools of America, or MSA, is a national nonprofit professional education association whose members are schools and school districts. The association represents and is a resource to magnet schools, parents, teachers, school boards, administrators, business leaders, community organizations and institutions of higher education. Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools is appreciative of the partnership with Beth and Heidi and welcome their perspective on choice programming within CMS. At this time, I will turn it over to Beth and Heidi.
Thank you, Dr. Baughnite. So good evening, Dr. Hill and Charlotte Mecklenburg School Board members, and thank you for your attention through this, all these presentations tonight. So, um, just tell a little bit about ourselves so you kind of know the perspective we're bringing. I'm presently a National Institute of Magnet School Leadership Consultant. Formerly I was the Senior Director of Magnet Curriculum Enhancement Programs in Wake County, North Carolina. I also served as the MSAP Grant Project Director for three grant cycles. I was a principal and assistant principal in three magnet schools in Wake County and I've completed magnet reviews similar to the one we did in Charlotte in Kentucky, Georgia, North Carolina, South Carolina, Minnesota, New York and Connecticut. And I served on the Board of Magnet Schools of America from 2018 until the spring of this year, and I've been a lifelong educator for over 35 years and 25 of those were in magnet schools.
Heidi? Hi. I'm Heidi. I am also presently a National Institute of Magnet School Leadership Consultant. I've been an educator for nearly 30 years. Um, a former school site and then district magnet coordinator in the Office for Equity, Innovation and Choice in Brevard County, Florida, and have held K-12 teaching and leadership positions in Florida, New York, Rhode Island and Virginia. My work with NIMSL is varied. I facilitate professional learning to school and district teams to advance equity, access, innovation and academic excellence. I've completed magnet reviews in Connecticut, New York, North Carolina and Washington, DC. It is our pleasure to be here.
So Magnet Schools of America were designed as a tool of desegregation in Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools. Since taking its first major steps towards using magnet schools as part of a new student assignment plan in 1992, 93, the magnet programs were supported with local funds. In 1993, 94, CMS applied for the Federal Magnet Schools Assistance Program Grant for startup funding. The grant was awarded and CMS received MSAP grants in four subsequent cycles with each grant cycle lasting three years. This spring, the district contracted with the National Institute of Magnet School Leadership to assist in conducting a review of its magnet programs. The last review by NIMSL of CMS magnet schools occurred in 2015. We applied CMS for doing magnet reviews to measure their magnet schools against the MSA pillars and standards of excellence. Um, I'm not going to, this next slide, Dr. Baughnite shared with you just as far as Magnet Schools of America and what it is, but I'm not sure it's, um, if she shared the foremost public school choice leader for equitable education, school integration and academic excellence for over 30 years. And it's a resource for schools, parents, teachers, school boards, administrators, business leaders, community organizations and institutions of higher education. Currently there are over, um, 45 district memberships of the two MSA ranging from 10 to 100-plus schools per district across the country. There are currently 128 institution memberships and institution memberships are either an individual school or a district office. In addition, NIMSL provides services to a lot of the member schools and districts. This map represents MSA membership and NIMSL services across the country. So the National Institute of Magnet School Leadership is the technical assistance arm of Magnet Schools of America that provides professional development and support to member districts and schools. NIMSL builds all their professional development support around the MSA five pillars and 10 standards that Heidi is going to share with you in a few minutes. One of the many ways NIMSL supports magnet schools and districts is conducting magnet reviews and then supporting schools and districts in achieving the recommendations. In addition to Heidi and I, National Institute of Magnet School Leadership experts are teachers, coordinators, administrators in magnet schools and come from across the country. There are NIMSL consultants with pre-K, elementary, middle and high school experience and 10 are either former and are current magnet school principals covering all three levels and one is a superintendent. These are the NIMSL experts that visited CMS in March. They are from all over the country, Louisiana, Tennessee, North Carolina, Florida, Oregon, California, Nevada, Georgia and South Carolina, and they visited 59 of the magnet schools in CMS. So the purpose of the visits where the NIMSL, um, experts visited each school to examine magnet school performance using indicators such as diversity, student achievement, curriculum, professional development, leadership, district relations and family and community engagement. In March 2024, a team of magnet experts from NIMSL collected and examined data and information from interviews, observations and evidence to enable the district to assess the quality of its magnet programs, provide greater transparency to the community about their magnet programs and to begin school improvement decisions based on evidence. As a result of the visit, Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools has a rigorous written report evaluating CMS's magnet schools based on MSA's five pillars and 10 standards that Heidi is going to talk to you about now. Sorry.
That's it. Okay, so what are the MSA magnet school pillars? These are five tenants that make up the foundation of high-functioning, sustainable magnet programs. So the five, oh, go, next one, thank you. I don't know. Okay, I got it. That's okay. So they are on the screen, diversity, innovative curriculum and professional development, academic excellence, leadership and family and community partnerships. Now, for each of these five pillars, there are 10, or two standards of excellence, so a total of 10. So these five pillars and 10 standards, they are really what define magnet school excellence nationally, and we use them as the core of our review in each of the magnet schools in CMS. They serve as a set of standards defining essential elements and characteristics of high-quality magnet programs. So under the diversity pillar, the two standards are student recruitment and selection and diversity and equity. Under innovative curriculum and professional development, we have theme and curriculum fidelity and professional development. Under academic excellence, we have instructional fidelity and student achievement. Under the leadership pillar, we have leadership and educator development and district and magnet relations. Family and community partnerships pillar, community engagement and partnerships and family engagement and communication. For more information about magnet school pillars and standards of excellence, you're invited to check out the Magnet Schools of America website at magnet.edu. Okay. So I want to talk to you a little bit about the processes, the overall process that this protocol was. So before we share the high-level findings of the CMS magnet review, you have that overview context. So the magnet school review process was designed to include multifaceted perspectives. To do the review, we analyze quantitative data that was shared by the district and schools as well as North Carolina Department of Public Instruction data. This was to identify trends and opportunities in magnet school programs. This included the demographics of magnet school programs, magnet application data, school websites, the North Carolina school report card data, North Carolina teacher working condition survey data. Working Conditions Survey data, the National Center for Education Statistics websites, statistics website, and more. MSA magnet professionals also carefully reviewed policies, processes, and the school artifacts which were uploaded by the schools in folders for each of the 10 MSA standards of excellence. As Beth mentioned, in March, we visited each of the magnet schools and facilitated parent and student focus groups at each school site that arranged them. Magnet school experts conducted walkthroughs, classroom visits, and interviewed staff and students at each magnet school, both formally and informally. Their questions were aligned to the five magnet school pillars and 10 standards of excellence. A bit of information about student and parent focus groups. Parent-community focus groups were conducted in 51 magnet school sites. Parent and community members were allowed to provide their views on the magnet program at each school. The questions focused on suggestions for strengthening the magnet school, what parents see as unique about the magnet school, how business or community partners are welcomed into the magnet school, and how parents are engaged in the magnet theme, and how schools communicate with families. It is to be noted that some schools did not have parent and/or student focus groups. These are due to reasons such as school lockdowns due to an emergency response in the community or combining with a sister school. Some schools did not arrange them at all. For student focus groups, there were 58 student focus groups conducted, and students were asked to provide their views on the magnet program at their school. Their questions focused around their favorite part of the school, what they would like to see changed, what was different from other schools in the area, and how they felt about the academics at their school, as well as what their future plans were. Additionally, four district focus groups were conducted virtually, also in March. District-level personnel were asked a multitude of questions to allow them to provide their perspective about magnet schools in CMS. District administrators and early and middle college leaders were asked questions to provide context, history, and perspective about the magnet schools in CMS, and how they were striving to meet the five pillars of magnet school excellence. And lastly, a community survey was available for parents to complete from March 26 through April 12. This was to reach a broader range of parents and community members than those in the community focus groups. Parents and community members were allowed to provide their views in Spanish and English on the magnet schools in CMS, and you are to be applauded that over 10,000 parents responded to the survey. The questions focused on the most important factors in choosing a magnet school, their thoughts on the magnet application process, other choice options they applied for, suggestions for ways to strengthen CMS magnet schools, other innovative themes, programs that would interest them, and if they believed that CMS magnet schools offer high-quality instructions. And again, the individuals that worked on publicizing that survey through magnet programs, communications, and your staff are to be commended on their strategy because they got such a number of responses. This is... There's way more information than we can provide here tonight. The report is 778 pages, including the appendix, and it is broken down into the following components. There is an executive summary. There is a description of the process for review, and each of the five pillars and 10 standards of excellence. Overall findings and recommendations for the whole school district organized by the five pillars, with a scorecard for the district. Additionally, for each school that was part of this review, there's a scorecard along with successes, challenges, and recommendations for each of MSA's 10 standards of magnet school excellence. There are also overall recommendations, again, for each school. And lastly, there is an appendix with the student focus groups for each school, the parent focus groups for each school, and notes from all of the district focus groups and the district community survey results. So, we're going to start with some high-level findings from that community survey. For this question, 5,282 responses. Seventy-nine percent of people in the community survey agreed that diversity should be a goal of magnet schools. Out of over 5,000 responses for the question, please rate the importance of the following factors in deciding to apply for a particular magnet school in CMS. Ranking as extremely important are: school reputation, with 43.5%, magnet program theme with 39.5%, diversity of the school community, 30.9%, type of transportation provided, 30.8%. In the community magnet school survey, 64.57% of the respondents, when asked, "Have you ever applied to a magnet school or program in Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools?", answered yes. So, about 65, 64.5%. When asked, "How would you describe the magnet application process?", 21% of respondents said that it was difficult to navigate or very difficult to navigate. For the question, "In addition to magnet schools, did you apply or consider any other school choice options available in the community?", for this question, there were 5,782 responses, and they break down as charter school, 29.5%, private school, 18.9%, and homeschooling, In the community survey about magnet schools, when asked about attending the following: the district magnet fair, school tours and events, in-person district information sessions, and virtual district information sessions, 50% of respondents replied, "Did not attend any magnet school events." However, in the same community survey, for the question, "How important were the following sources of information in your initial selection of particular schools of choice to visit?", the highest response rate for very important and extremely important was school tours and/or virtual and in-person school events, with 5,256 responses. And that was followed by transportation services level at 4,410 responses. When it comes to the perception of teaching and learning at magnet schools, 65% of respondents answered, "Agree" or strongly agree that magnet schools in CMS offer high-quality instruction. Even though survey narrative responses, staff, student and family focus groups, and site visits reveal the need for magnet theme integration supports in magnet school classrooms. And now, Dr. Beth Cochran will begin presenting some of the high-level findings from the
So, in addition to the highlights of the parent survey findings, MSA found the following 58 overall findings based on each MSA pillar. Let's... We're going to go to the recommendations. Based on the findings we just shared, MSA made the following 37 overall recommendations for CMS. For Pillar 1, diversity under marketing and recruiting, ensure that every magnet school has a marketing plan detailing how the school will target student recruitment and marketing to increase socioeconomic diversity. Consider making magnet school information more prominent on the district homepage and having magnet school leaders conduct school website audits to ensure the magnet information is inviting to families and the public, and develop and increase district-level marketing and recruitment materials. For magnet transportation, offer similar and equitable programs in each transportation zone so that students do not have to leave their transportation zone and provide their own transportation for certain magnet themes. And consider targeting under-enrolled magnet high schools for increased levels of transportation to improve enrollment and diversity. For the magnet selection process, simplify the magnet choice process so that parents can have a user-friendly resource that helps them determine what their neighborhood school would be, what their magnet options would be, and how to access those options. Study the diversity and equity impact of allowing students to attend any magnet school in the district if they provide their own transportation. Consider adjusting the geographic zone preferences of the Montessori magnet schools to help the Montessori magnet schools match the demographics of the district. Consider having the magnet selection priorities applied after the initial magnet selection process to open magnet seats to ensure that the socioeconomic diversity achieved is not undone. And consider providing some kind of priority for non-magnet students in a magnet school to follow their magnet pathway. For Pillar 2, innovative curriculum and professional development under magnet themes. Prominently display magnet schools' themes on school websites in front of school buildings and street signage. Explore ways to make programs within schools, school-wide. Since all students are supposed to have access to the magnet theme in grades K to 8, consider removing branding that refers to the schools as partial magnet schools. Despite some students attending a magnet school through the choice office, all students attend the magnet school and should have access to the theme. Review magnet themes for uniqueness and attraction versus what should be part of all students' core experience. As part of that process, research what non-magnet schools in the district are doing so that magnet themes are unique from what non-magnet schools are offering. Review the learning immersion talent development theme for its uniqueness and attractiveness to all students. Consider adding a parallel theme to the learning immersion talent development theme such as world language, arts, STEM, et cetera. Continuing with magnet theme recommendations. Study the impact that adding the Cambridge programs to magnet schools will have on keeping international baccalaureate magnet programs unique. Expand the middle-years program across middle and high school NYPDs for school-wide implementation and not just for magnet students. Provide district support to language immersion schools to ensure high-quality curricular materials are available that are already translated into target languages to lessen the burden of language immersion teachers having to translate the district-provided English materials. Provide training to magnet principals, magnet coordinators, and magnet teachers to increase knowledge concerning the purpose of a magnet school. Include in the training the school's specific socioeconomic diversity goals, target enrollment, and essential elements to high-quality magnet schools, such as a school-wide instructional focus that supports the theme or integrated curriculum into the theme. For theme-based professional development, create collaborative opportunities for school leaders, magnet coordinators, and master teachers to work with their colleagues at other CMS schools, including other themealike magnet schools and other magnet schools in the K-12 pathway. Create a theme-based professional development plan that equips teachers with strategies for integrating their magnet themes across subjects by developing theme-aligned lesson plans, units, and projects. Identify exemplary models of other magnet programs across the country to compare notes with and learn from, and to ensure magnet schools are relevant and continually improving. Ensure that all magnet school principals, coordinators, and teachers are aware of the National Organization for Magnet Schools, Magnet Schools of America, and the resources MSA provides for magnet schools, such as professional development, networking, and national conferences. Now, Heidi is going to share the recommendations for pillars 3 through 5.
Thank you, Beth. Okay. There's really one overall recommendation for academic excellence in your magnet school, and that is to try to provide flexibility and collaboration in relation to district-mandated scripted curriculum and instructional practices, and support schools with integrating these practices into their magnet themes. Disbraiding together of theme-based experiences for students with the district's curriculum has to be intentional and supported to be highly effective. This is often looked at as like the special sauce of magnet schools. The staff is looking deeply at the rigor of the standards as they ensure the magnet theme is implemented, leading to high-quality, standards-based, theme-integrated instruction. Here are the overall recommendations for Pillar 4, Leadership. Under clarity of purpose, clarify the purpose, mission, and goals of magnet programs in CMS. The entire community should know the purpose of magnets and the history of their inception. Create a community task force if necessary to help with this process, including parents, students, business partners, teachers, principals, district leadership, et cetera. Include the operation of magnet schools in the district's strategic plan, and outline the goals, objectives, and action steps specific to magnet schools in creating socioeconomic diversity. Ensure that each magnet school's school improvement plan includes specifics on how the school will address theme integration, targeted student recruitment to increase socioeconomic diversity, and professional development and training. Under clarity of purpose, continuing. Develop a strategic process for magnetizing, demagnetizing, and determining the location and magnet theme of magnet schools to increase socioeconomic diversity. Create a framework for each magnet theme and what key positions professional development, theme essentials, et cetera, that each theme requires to be successful and to ensure all magnet schools have access to the document for transparency. Under financial sustainability planning, the recommendations are: to develop a transparent, comprehensive financial sustainability plan for magnet programs that outlines dedicated funding sources, budget allocation, and resource allocation strategies. Provide district financial resources for a dedicated magnet coordinator position at each school to oversee theme integration, marketing, and recruiting. Consider researching and applying for a Federal Magnet Schools Assistant Program (MSAP) grant during the next grant cycle that, if awarded, provides $15 million over five years. Applying for this is very... It's a very competitive grant, and it will include commitments such as, including a voluntary desegregation plan and specific magnet office personnel aligned to the priorities of the grant. Create a budget plan to equitatively provide teachers and magnet coordinators at each school with professional development around the magnet theme and theme integration particularly, but not limited to school themes that require training. So, IB Montessori require training, but really all themes need to have this theme training. This will ensure that the magnet theme is implemented with fidelity. Provide additional funding for magnet district personnel positions to support magnet school themes, professional development, recruitment, and marketing. Because compared to other districts across the country with high-quality, successful, and sustainable magnet schools, the CMS magnet office is understaffed to serve the number of magnet programs in the district. Okay. Pillar 5. Here are some recommendations for Pillar 5, family and community partnerships. Collaborative input. The recommendations are: consider getting community input before making significant adjustments in the magnet school application calendar, as well as creating a far-reaching communications campaign. Ensure there is collaborative input from school leaders and families in district-wide change initiatives such as moving magnet schools to new facilities. And under theme-based partnerships, provide district-supported, theme-based partnerships. While many schools had family engagement and some magnet theme-based partnerships, they need more district-supported, theme-based partnerships. And now, Dr. Cochran will conclude.
So, in closing, Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools are to be commended for the 70 So, in closing, Charlotte Mecklenburg schools are to be commended for the 79% of people in the community survey agreeing that diversity should be a goal of magnet schools. And the district lottery taking into account socioeconomic status to try to achieve socioeconomic diversity among schools and CMS's commitment to conducting magnet reviews to assess where their magnet schools stand in relation to MSA's five pillars and 10 standards. And finally, MSA encourages Charlotte Mecklenburg schools to clarify the purpose, mission, and goals of magnet programs in CMS and to develop a transparent, comprehensive financial sustainability plan for magnet programs that outlines dedicated funding sources, budget allocation, and resource allocation strategies based on the purpose of magnets in the district. And finally, to adjust the magnet selection priorities by reviewing the impact of the following. Not applying selection priorities until after the initial magnet selection period. Allowing students to attend any magnet school if they provide their own transportation. Having geographic zone preferences at some schools. And having no priority for non-magnet students following their magnet pathway. So, thank you so much for your time tonight and for allowing us to come and visit your magnet schools. We always learn a lot in every district we visit, and we hope that the report that we shared and the highlights of tonight will help you as you continue to strive for magnet excellence in your district. Thanks.
You know, if you had any final comments, Dr. Balknight, or are we just ready for questions?
Yes, ma'am, ready for questions.
All right, board members, do you have any questions? I have an initial question, maybe just to kind of start it off. So, in the survey that you conducted, it was 10,000 over 10,000 individuals. Do you, I don't, obviously, we haven't looked through that 700-page report yet. But do you have in here, does it contain who they are, like demographically, where they live? Is all of that information in here?
Some way, yes. And in the appendix of that report, you can flip right to the back and see that. Now, we have a PDF because it was given through the CMS survey tool. So you might be able to access it a different way that's not the PDF, but that was the easiest way for it to be shared cross-organization.
All right, particularly what I'm interested in is probably, and I don't know if that's available or not, is, one, the demographics of that participated in the survey and where they live. Like, are these mostly suburban people you talk to, or they, you know, in the crescent? You may not be familiar with, you know, I'm just wondering if we have that information, do you know offhand?
I don't have it offhand, we can follow up with that, but if, again, it's in the appendix. What I will say is this. The toolkit that was put out to the schools and then through the district channels to publicize this included social media pushes, printing, printed flyers and postcards for each school. They worked really hard to make sure that each school that was part of this report got that. And I'm sure some schools have more participation than the others, so.
I think, and I think what I'd like to add to that is that, because you were asking the different regions. So, the parent focus groups, those were at each individual magnet school, so obviously that's dealing with that. The parent survey, that really, that really would be like the district to be able to share. Because they, as Heidi said, they pushed it out, I don't know if they have all that level of information.
So the survey information, not the focus group, but the survey information was pushed district-wide?
Yes.
And not just the current magnet?
It was on our main website, yes. And you guys got a very good response.
I have a follow-up to that. If it was pushed out district-wide, right?
Yes, ma'am.
141,000 students, and we're only looking at 5,282 responses of community survey responses, right?
And some questions.
Well, I'm looking here, it says, "Community survey responses, 79%," and it says, "5,282 responses."
For that question.
For that question. So we're basing some of this on 3.74% of the total population of CMS, of the students. How, I'm concerned about the validity that we're basing it on such a small group of respondents.
I mean, you always, yeah, you always, I mean, 10,000 responses is still, I mean, truly, like, across country as we do those, that's still a pretty high response that you got from your community. And maybe, maybe, you know, we haven't got the numbers, not the number of people responding, but that percent, right? Because I want to say we had.
I think the other thing to lift is that they also had focus groups, so they were able to triangulate the data. So they did have 10,000 on a survey that was from the website, but they actually went to, I think, 58 of the school, magnet school programs and had focus groups, I believe, at 51 with parents, and then 57 or 58 with students. So they were also able to, your point, Ms. Klein, they got more, the data in more than one way to triangulate the recommendations.
I love magnets, I've been involved in them since '92. I love all of CMS, but I noticed one of your points was that about the under-enrolled high school programs. And I don't know if this is your question or Dr. Balknight's question. Is there any consideration of streamlining the programs? In other words, if it's under-enrolled, is it even appropriate to have the program at that school or at all? And if that's the case, is that something you need, you and your department need to consider that?
I think that's what the board would direct us with those decisions. That's the purpose of having this review, sharing the data with you. And in your notebook, you also have the waitlist for all of our magnet programs. That's in your notebook as well for you to make those informed decisions to direct us to do.
So it's all in the 700 pages?
By tabs. And on the website, if you like, the digital version.
But to just, I just want to reiterate what Dr. Balknight said. The whole purpose of this exercise is to share data across all five of the board's goals. And then at the end, in December, we would be looking to you all to set priorities. So we won't really be sharing, like, what we're doing about this data, this is really just survey says.
Question making.
On the pillar two, it talks about magnet themes. If you could talk through one of the bullet points, that would be great. On the, it's on the next page, on the pillar two, yes. It's talking about study the impact adding Cambridge programs to magnet schools and relating to IB magnet programs. I'm just curious how you came up with that, because I don't think, we don't have any schools that have both Cambridge and IB in the same place. So you can talk through what you're referring to there?
So, the Cambridge program and IB are somewhat similar. They might, those two organizations may argue with that or not. And so you just have to wonder, like, how do you recruit for, we're thinking from a recruiting lens. So how do you recruit for Cambridge and say, "We're different than IB"? I don't know, Heidi, if you want to add anything to that.
Yeah, there are districts that have both. Sometimes it's expensive, sometimes it's geography, but they tend to be marketed as a global-themed magnet school. So you can do it, but to be successful, in the family's and public's mind, you have to really differentiate the difference. Because sometimes it gets muddied.
Are you saying that, in this, are you saying that, as a district, we're not doing a good job of differentiating from between the two? Because I'm just trying to get a understanding of what we're saying here.
I think we're saying, we do say, "Study the impact" to see if that is going to be a problem or not. I don't think we're saying you are, and as Heidi said, there are places across the country that have both. And I guess part of the reason we put that there is, in some of those places, it has become a problem to distinguish between the two, and it becomes a bit of a marketing problem. Any other questions, board members? Board member none.
So, this is great, something I've been asking for as a parent that has one in magnet and one not. Did you guys look at the actual performance of the students in the magnet programs too? And how they actually impacted outcomes?
Not long-term, but we have just kind of the data for each school listed in that individual school report card there.
And then, secondarily, I think you mentioned around finance and how they are budgeted. Can, I'm trying to remember what pillar that's in, sorry.
Leadership, usually.
Leadership. Can you expand upon, like, do you guys see different funding generally for magnets? And are you saying you're not seeing that so much here? It's okay, we can be transparent here.
We're saying we saw inconsistencies, like, of when we were at the schools and talking with the schools as far as what different schools had, like, for professional development, if they had a magnet coordinator, if they didn't have a magnet coordinator, those kind of things, so inconsistencies.
Thank you.
And it's not saying you can't, that every magnet school should have exactly the same. That's why, I don't know if we have that up there, that slide where it says, "Based on theme essentials." So like, an IB school is going to need different type of resourcing, like, a lot for PD, less probably for positions. And an art school would have, need more for positions, maybe less for PD. So does that make sense? So I'm not saying that it should be the same.
To support whatever we need to accomplish for staff and students. Okay, thank you.
And then being transparent about that. Sorry, board member Beasley.
Questions for Dr. Balknight. I'm looking at the data points that you have in our big binder. The SASGP supporting data points. Can you explain a little bit more detail of what the chart is showing in relation to, for the lottery's results? What the chart is showing in relation to the summary findings?
Can you? Ms. Lyons is going to bring it up for you. Just explain what this chart means.
Are you talking about the, oh, the data points, okay. So, this document was my attempt to almost give you a cheat sheet for the notebook and for the website. So what I, every button that's on the website is linked here with the hyperlink lottery's results, for example, in this digital copy. And we'll make sure you have a digital copy as well, but you have a hard copy. So for lottery results, what we attempted to do was to list out for you the total seats and the total students on the waitlist. But for each of those sections, those are on the website as well with more detail. But we tried to just give you some summary conclusions for each section so that as you're working through the website and the documents, this sort of gives you some high-level overview, but there's certainly more. They have a 700-page report, and I have a paragraph here.
Right, so, well, my specific question, though, the reason that prompted that is if you look at North Mac Culinary Arts, I don't know if this is a typo, or if there's something, there's zero seeded total, but there's seven on a waitlist. And I know that there are kids in there because I saw it. They're making chicken and dumplings, it was great.
So we can, I can check with the team to see if that is a typo. Or if that was students after the lottery closed or something to that effect.
Great, thank you so much.
Essentially, this chart is just a high-level summary of programs that have a waitlist.
Of more than 10 students.
Of more than 10 students.
So that, as I think someone asked earlier, looking at the number of students and programs in a waitlist, this gives you the top programs in our district.
I have a follow-up.
Follow-up.
I have a follow-up. So, does that mean since Northwest is not on here, is North, are you looking, do you look at Northwest as a whole? Or do you look at the individual programs? Because Northwest is broken up to theater and music and orchestra. And I don't see anything in Northwest on this whole high-overview list. So I'm wondering, were you looking at it as a whole school, or are you looking at the individual programs?
This list was as a whole school.
The whole school, okay, thank you.
Board member none.
Pillar one, with the diversity, with transportation, I think it'd be good to have the demographics too. Because I think, as Chair Sneed alluded to, it could also be driving some of the answers here. But is it more that, I know transportation kept coming up, but it looks like the crux may be just the availability of the magnets in relation to distance of the students, is that what it's saying to some extent?
About that one right there?
The first one, offer similar equitable programs in each transportation zone. Is the way we're interpreting that is they need, like, equal access or distance almost, okay.
And if you get that clarity about the purpose of magnets, it might even mean certain schools get additional transportation to make sure you're reaching those schools.
Gotcha, okay, so providing, we do have some limitations right now, you probably heard those expressed up. Okay, got it, just both. Just want to clarify.
All right, I don't see another hand. Thank you so much.
I'll have one more, one question. Well, maybe it's more of a, like, on pillar two, magnet themes. You said, "Review magnet themes for uniqueness and attraction." Did you guys do any data collection here? Are you saying that we should do additional research to understand what the community is looking for in these programs? Or are you using more of the, like, lottery data? I guess the question is, like, when you say, "Review magnet themes for uniqueness and attraction" versus what should be part of the experiences, like, what is your recommendation on how we figure that out?
Like, the lottery, so the lottery data, your waitlist seats.
Okay.
If you can drill down also to, like, the demographics to try to help the school become diverse, right? Because you might be attracting students that aren't helping.
I would like to actually.
No, no, I'm saying, because of your question, now we've got some more questions.
But I would like to piggyback.
You're fine, you're right. No, no, you're right. You're right, you're cool. We're just following up with you.
In addition to what Beth said, I think it's important, that conversation with industry and that alignment and making sure there's clarity, CTE, all the way down. So Ed Natan is a researcher, and she talks about, we have opportunity gaps, but students have identity gaps. They need to be able to imagine that they are builders, coders, and writers, and readers in global ways, entrepreneurial mindset. So it is really important to look at that alignment. You know, there are quite a few medical pieces in the workforce, future of workforce report. How are your STEM and STEAM programs fostering that interest and love? So I think it's just a matter of regularly having those conversations and inviting that, those collaborations.
All right, go ahead, and you might ask my question.
I was just saying, based on what the response you just gave, I don't know if we could make this determination based off just uniqueness and attractiveness. Because it could, going back to the previous conversation with
Transportation.
It could be the location of the school. It could be attractive to many, it could, many students could want it, or families could want it. But it may be location and transportation. So I don't know if we could look at that unilaterally to think through this process.
And that goes back to the clarity of purpose. So if your purpose is to get socioeconomic diversity, how are you meeting those goals with those decisions?
But I also think that, do you have a follow-up? But I also think that you pointed out that it should be, in order to resolve transportation issues, I think the suggestion that you made is to have, maybe you have the same program in more than one transportation zone.
Because that also helps transportation.
Some of the transportation issue. But that's just a statement, not a question. But my question is, is, in this 700 pages, is there a space that, I just don't know how we collected, because I don't know what the survey said. Like, is there a space, or the, is there a space either through focus groups, which I would be more interested in, in non-focus groups, that it says, "You guys need a program on, that strictly focuses on AI, a magnet program"? So you didn't collect that type of data?
There are some responses in the community survey that might mention different things, but I wouldn't call that, like, a resounding reason to follow that thread. I think it takes those conversations. And then, over time, as things evolve and change, is it still a viable, looking at that data for waitlists, for instance?
Well, I think that, that's not a question, let me just reserve my comment.
We do know that this process, the questions, we get more questions.
Yeah, 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 that's why I'm putting myself on.
Which is part of the beauty of this work.
Yeah, got it. So, any, one more question?
I have one more, yeah.
Okay.
I think it's more advice, because we're like, you're right, these are leading to more questions than what do we do with the information. On pillar two, you said, "Identify exemplary models of other magnet programs across the country and compare." Does your organization help us do that? Like, who's the best STEM program, or, I mean, if we're connecting to Charlotte Works and they're telling us it's these type of, like, medical or health positions, who's leading the way that? Are you, can you guys help us connect with, like, who's the best of the best in these programs? Okay. Just a question.
Okay. So, I think that, that's the final question. Board members, I think that that's the discussion we would have, like, on December 10th. If magnet programming was a, is a priority that the board, that staff and superintendent and staff and Dr. Balknight work on, then they would flush out those things, like, how do we collect, what's the great, like, that would be the next step. So, it's nothing that we particularly have to solve to, but that's an operational thing that they would, and we can give them the overarching themes of what our concerns are with the magnet program, and then they go and do. I hope I summed that up right, yes?
Yes, ma'am, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Hill for some summary comments.